For now, we're going to be moving on to the subject of prayer. And what I like us to do is to approach prayer from different angles. Because until I actually started preparing for this part of the Bible study, it dawned on me that prayer was such a big theme in the Bible. Of course, I know it's a big thing in the Bible. Pray with our season, pray all kinds of prayer, et cetera, et cetera. But you know, when many of us take, I mean, rather than when we read the Bible and we come across scriptures that talk about prayer, usually our minds are on the commandment to pray. So when it comes to prayer, people just, you know, if somebody starts teaching about prayer, it's all going to come back to, you pray, you know, pray. So what do we do? We just pray and we just... But I discovered that there is a right and wrong way to pray. And when it comes to the wrong way to pray, it's better not to pray. Better to shut up than to pray the wrong way. And that's what we're hopefully going to be learning. We're going to be learning the right and wrong way to pray, how to pray effectively, how to pray the way the Holy Spirit wants you to pray, so that it's, you know, your voice and his voice working together. Okay, so before we move on, you know, we move ahead, let's look at these some key facts about prayer. Prayer is one of the most important tools that we have been given. See, when we talked about, you know, the weapons of our warfare, when we talked about Ephesians chapter 6, from verse 10 to 18, we listed all the different parts of the armor. They are the end. It was, we should be watchful, we should be sober and alert. Then we're also taught, you know, told to pray, to pray. So pray all kinds of prayer. So prayer is listed there as one of the weapons that we're supposed to be using. And it's an effective one when used appropriately. Prayer doesn't work when used inappropriately. And I'm pretty certain that each one of us can testify to this. We prayed and not gotten answers and wondered what was going on. We have all done it. And maybe we will never find all the answers, all the reasons why our prayers were not answered. There are some things we will not discover until we get ahead. But there's a whole lot that is discoverable here on earth. And we want to discover those things that can be discovered. So let's go back to the origin of prayer, because that's what I like to do. This is a Bible study. Let's not just touch on the topic here and there and then, you know, do a motivational kind of thing. No, let's go systematically, let's go to the origin of prayer. Where did prayer begin? When was the first prayer said? So prayer dates the very beginning of creation. The Bible says that God communed with Adam and Eve in the garden in the cool of the evening. Except that the prayer at that time would have looked very differently from what we mainly now class as prayer. God came into the garden and God came into the garden and he communed with them. What form the communion took, we don't know. But I would imagine there will be no difference from the communion that you have with God today. And note, I'm using the word communion rather than prayer, because sadly, the two things have gone separate paths. Prayer and communion. Many people actually start communing with God after they walk away from a prayer meeting. Because the prayer meeting is to generate words and noise. It's a monologue that God has no part in. He can't get a word in edgewise. So it's actually, actually after the prayer meeting, that communion begins. That communion is quiet and it's in the heart. It's him whispering things and the Lord's voice is not loud. God doesn't speak with a booming voice from heaven. He did that among Sinai, you know, many other times in the Bible. In fact, when he did it, when Jesus, during Jesus's day, remember, he did it. He did it twice at Jesus's, um, at the month of Transfiguration. And then not even at the baptism, um, was that the baptism? Yeah, there was the baptism. And then there was this other time when Jesus was just talking and then the voice responded. And then, and the people said, oh, it thundered. Imagine that the son of God was here, talking to his father all the time. And only on three occasions would these other people hear something. God doesn't like to speak in an audible voice. He likes to speak in a still, small voice that is heard within. Remember when the story of Elijah? I told you about how he was almost depressed and went to sleep under that tree. From there, he went to Mount Horeb and he hid in a cave. The Lord appeared. The Bible says, before the Lord came, there was thunder, there was, you know, lightning, all sorts of things were happening there. But God was not in those things. After this, Elijah heard a still small voice. And then Elijah covered himself and went and stood up in front of him. Because Elijah knew all the noise that was not good. The still small voice, that's the one that Elijah... Why did he know that? Because he had been hearing that still small voice all the time. The only time he couldn't hear it is when he was almost depressed. Otherwise, he'd been hearing it. This is actually, there's a little lesson there. And it links in with what Irene shared with us last, um, last week, you know, when she had an accident and she thought she had broken her spine. And when she was filled with negative emotion, she started hearing the voice telling her, oh, this is the end of you. This is that, that, this is the, and until she rose above it and then started hearing a different voice. So that's just an example, how that when your emotional state, your emotional state blocks off the voice of God. Anyway, so this is to tell you that God doesn't like a booming voice. Love is a quiet voice inside your heart. That's where you're going to hear it. It's not even a voice. It's like a thought. So we call it the voice, a small, but it's really a thought. It's not audible, can't be heard. It's a, it's a thought. It bubbles up inside of you. Sometimes when the thought comes, it's like, hmm, I can't find the right words to describe it to you. I can sense something. I kind of know what it is, but I can't tell you yet. I got to figure it out. Sometimes it can take minutes, hours, days to figure out, to translate it into words. Okay? Because he's inside of you and he gives you impressions. He speaks to you in impressions. So sometimes you walk into a situation and then suddenly you get an impression. I don't know where it came from, but you get an impression. You know, I remember some time back, met somebody and we're talking to him. And I looked at him and I just got an impression. I got something that was about what was going on in his life. And you couldn't have read it. I remember sharing it with someone I was with and they said, ah, I didn't get that. But that's what I got. He, he was just there. You just look at somebody and you just know something instantly. And you know that you couldn't have known it any other way. And then when you share it with them, they're like, whoo, how did you know that? So let's start to become sensitive to these things. Many people think, oh, that's word of knowledge, word of this, word of gift. This person has that gift, that person doesn't have gift. Hey, you have the Holy Spirit and he's the one that does this. He's there, the one inside me is not different from the one inside you. He can do the same thing if you become attentive and you start to be more, you know, in tune with his voice. So going back to the subject of prayer, and this is all part of it. Prayer for many people is the loud endeavor. You go and you make noise and you're sweating. If you've had so many years, you've come back from the place of prayer, yes. Show me the results. Paul said, when I come amongst you, he was written to the Corinthians, I will not know your talk by your power. I don't want to hear anything about your power. Show me and power will manifest in results. Let's stop measuring prayer by sweat, by the number of hours, by how loud it was. And let's start to look at how effective the prayer was. Because effective prayer leads to results, results. So the initial prayer, the prayer that Adam and Eve would have prayed, it'd be very different from the prayer that you and I often engage in. I mean, imagine God walking into the garden to meet Adam and Eve. And then Adam and Eve, they start to shout, hey, Lord, hallelujah, we want to do it. The Lord just, what's going on with these guys? I've just come to see you. I mean, imagine your friend comes to visit you and then you start shouting at him and mentioning their name 5,000 times, hallelujah, and just shaking your head off. What's that all about? What's that all about? Do you know why you do that? It's because you don't believe that God is inside you. You think he's far away somewhere. You are trying to conjure up his presence. You're trying to bring him into your situation. You are shouting because you need to reach him. But I'm going to show you very quickly that the people who understood true biblical prayer, they did not engage in that kind of prayer. So the prayer that Adam and Eve engaged in is very, very different. But there was a time in history when men began to pray the kind of prayer that you and I have been engaging in sometimes. Do you know where that time was? It's found in Genesis chapter 4, verse 26. Genesis chapter 4 talks about Cain and Abel. In the process of time, the two brothers decided to offer sacrifices to God. Cain brought some crops, Abel brought an animal, offered it to God. God accepted Abel's sacrifice, he rejected Cain. Cain got angry, he killed his brother. From there on, the Bible starts to talk about the genealogy of Cain, Cain's descendants. This one begat that, this one begat that, this. And then it gets to chapter 25. Then it says, now Seth also had a child. So let's read that passage. Say, and Adam knew his wife again, and she bare a son and called his name Seth. For God said, she had, for, for God said she hath appointed me another seed instead of Abel, whom Cain slew. And to Seth, to him also there was born a son, and he called his name Enos. Then men began to call upon the name of the Lord. I want you to pause this vast passage. I, I, it troubled me for most three years. I said, Lord, I don't understand this. You're reading the genealogy of somebody, then another genealogy begins. And then suddenly then men began to call upon the name of the Lord. And that was it, that sentence, and the next sentence is about something else. It's like, what does that mean? Why is he even there? Why, why do we need to go about it? As I pondered it, I started using Concordance. Then it began to become clear to me. It's a critical passage. This is the turning point. This is the turning point in the relationship between man and God. This was when people started to shout, to cry out to God. Because when you crawl back to the beginning of Genesis chapter 4, this was after the fall, Cain did not cry out to God. Cain had conversations with God. That man who went on to kill his brother, he was not holy. He didn't even love God. The New Testament describes Cain as being of the evil one. In other words, he was, he was an ally of the devil. He had conversations with God. Many people tell us that when, when Adam and Eve sinned, God threw them out of the garden. Yes, the Bible says, he, he, he said, let, let them not stay here, lest they end up eating the fruit, um, the tree of life, from the tree of life. But he didn't throw them out. It's almost like an afterthought, you know, I've kept them here, but tree of life is also, okay, let me get them out. It's, it's important we understand this because when you, when you interpret it as God throwing them out, you start to think of the God who threw them out as being mean. And that's going to affect your relationship with God and it will affect your prayer, will affect your faith. But we'll come to that later. So it's important to get a proper interpretation. God didn't throw them out. He, he did that as a precaution. Because imagine they had eaten the tree of life and then they would live forever in their sinful state. It means salvation would not work for them. It means they could not have been saved. So God stopped that, made sure it wouldn't happen. Now, Cain, after all of that, you know, you would have thought that after they led the garden, that was it. God washed his hands from them, they didn't have, no. Cain and Abel brought sacrifices to God, meaning they were trying to connect with him somehow. And they were able to have conversations with him, at least Cain did. So clearly, God hadn't abandoned, abandoned them. He hadn't cut off ties with them. He had connection with them. So why were these other ones crying out to him when these other ones were, were having a conversation? Something had happened. So when I first read this passage, these are some of the questions that I had. Why does this passage feature in the Bible in the first place? Why does it feature where it does? That, you know, after Seth's son, Enos, was born, then men began to... Why that particular moment? Why was it important that we knew that it was that moment that men began to call upon the name of the Lord? Could this mean that no one had called upon the name of the Lord before? If so, why were they doing so now? To answer these questions, we need to understand what it means to call upon the name of the Lord. See, I've, you know, I haven't studied Hebrew, by the way. But I do use the Concordance. I use the interline Bible, which can be found on, um, www.studytools.biblestudytools.com or somewhere, yeah, biblestudytools.com. Very useful. Two, two websites that I use for my Bible study, biblegateway.com and biblestudytools.com in case you are interested. These two websites have been of tremendous, you know, help to me. Now, I looked up the meaning of the word "call upon", the Hebrew word is "kara", and it said, "to call upon is to call, to cry utter a loud sound, to cry for help, to proclaim, read aloud." Now, it also say, "to summon, invite, invoke". So when I meditated upon it, it dawned on me, what these people were doing was they were crying out to God with a loud voice. And that means that they, they felt that God was near them. But why? Why was, why was Cain able to talk to them and then they, they had to cry? He looks to me and says, the answer is found in the genealogy of Cain. The Bible is so strategic. When you read it, please pay attention, even the genealogies, don't skip over them. That whole chapter 4 is about the genealogy of Cain. Do you know that all of Cain's descendants died in the flood, by the way? They all were wiped out. And it would seem to me that Cain's descendants, they don't worship God. So when Enoch, when not Enoch, Seth's descendants appeared on the scene, that's when men began to call upon the name of the Lord. In other words, that's when men began to connect with God again. Except that something had been lost. Something had been lost. That fellowship that was once there, it was almost like they didn't know how to do it. And so they were crying out to God. And this, if, if you like, if you can take it, this was the turning point from which today we now derive our prayer approaches. Screaming to God, ah, Lord, come, look. But this was because people had forgotten how to do it. In the beginning, it was not so. In the beginning, it was a dialogue. It was a, and it was a conversation between two intelligent minds. The Bible says, when God created animals, he brought them to Adam. That, so to see, the Bible says, to see what name Adam would give to the animal. Do you understand what's going on? That's the dialogue between two intelligent beings. Oh, I want to see what he's going to, oh, that's the name he came up with. That's like a father training his son and watching with delight as the son comes up with intelligent solutions. Prayer was fellowship between two beings, intelligent beings, one made in the image of the other. Can you imagine how far we have fallen from this ideal? When we just scream onto a God that we don't even know where he is? We don't know whether this prayer is going to be answered. We think the louder, the better, the more words, the better. We pray in King James English. We pray with big words. We pray to impress people. How did we get so far from this idea of communion between two hearts? Of communion between two intelligent minds? In case you're wondering, because some of you might want to pursue this, chase this down and do your own Bible study to find out, is what Ben's saying true? You know, does it, does it make sense? In case you want to chase this thing down. I created this life without purpose. You know, why might, why might the people have prayed, cried out to God in desperation? You know, why might they have done that? If you read Genesis chapter 5, verse 28 to 29, it says, "And Lamech lived 180 years, 180 and two years, and begat a son, and he called his name Noah, saying, 'This same shall comfort as concerning our work and toil of our hands, because of the ground which the Lord had cursed.'" In other words, you know, God cursed the land in Genesis chapter 3? But one thing you'll discover from the Bible is that very often the curse is pronounced and it takes time. It takes time. Sometimes it will not manifest in some generations because there were some good people there and the curse won't manifest. Then some evil guys appeared and the curse fully manifests, something that you'll find in the Bible. So these people were beginning to experience the fullness of that curse. And look at what they said, that this one, this child, Noah, will comfort us. They, they were laboring under difficult circumstances. Wouldn't have, it wouldn't surprise me that those difficult circumstances started under the time of, you know, during the time of Cain and his descendants. And so the people cried out to God. This topic is dear to my heart because I experienced it firsthand. I got saved in 1990 in Ghana. That's about three months before I left for Poland to do, to, to study. And I remember, and I got saved in the university campus. And the guys there, they were fervent in spirit. I mean, these guys, they loved the Lord. I mean, young guys, 19 years old, 20 years old, and they loved the Lord. They loved the word of God. I mean, these youngsters could break the word of God down. I mean, it was just beautiful. So I spent three months on campus, enjoyed it totally. Then I came home. I didn't, I didn't belong to a church at that time yet. I want to see a church, but maybe that'll be a, you know, a subject for another day. But, um, I used to go and pray in a school building next to a, not far from where we lived. And in the early hours of the morning, I'd go there and I'd find other people praying there as well. But I'd just go sit somewhere quietly, you know, do my thing, sing praises to the Lord, you know, enjoy the time there. I used to, when I used, I didn't have a formula. You know, sometimes people want to have a quiet time and they want to do this. And if that works for you, fine, but I'm, I'm not like that. I go with the flow. So I'd go there and then if I sensed that it was time to pray, I'd just pray. If I sensed it was time to sing, I'd just sing. And I'd just enjoy myself there. Then one day, one of the guys was praying there, said, you know what? Let's all join forces and pray together. We are all doing the same thing, we're all praying to the same God. You know, you were praying there, you were praying. Why not pray together? And why, why don't we all do this now? It is, you know, I didn't, I didn't experience that joy that comes with that confirmation that God gives you in your heart when, you know, something is in the right direction. But you know, it sounded like a good thing, so I went along with it. But I didn't enjoy it. And, you know, just wondering, why did I not enjoy it? I couldn't have, I didn't find an explanation for it. But I just stopped doing it. Just I'll come there now, just sneak somewhere and pray by myself. Then another time, a friend, this time a friend invited me, said, oh, Ben, um, do you want to come and join us? We, we all meet and pray at dawn, you know, we go to a park somewhere. So I said, okay. By the way, this, this brother, you know, he was wonderful brother. Really, when I got saved and I really didn't know my left and my right, you know, he really took me by the hand and helped me. So, you know, I really, I really love him and I respected him. So he said, let's, yes, I followed them and we went. And these guys, they were like typical Ghanaian prayer warriors. They were praying. The way they prayed, that prayer, I mean, it was like, gosh, I'm, I'm an amateur here. I don't really know what I'm doing because these guys, they run business, you know? The prayer topics would be raised and then literally they would charge down the gates of heaven. I was tired. I wasn't enjoying it particularly. Was there something wrong with me? You know, why, you know, I was like fish out of water. But I survived a meeting and I go home. And when I, I don't remember whether I was on my way home or when I got back home, I just knew I wasn't going back. I just knew, it wasn't like I was going to ask God, why should, I just knew I wasn't going back. I just went back to praying by myself and I enjoyed that one. I enjoyed the presence of God. I was too young to understand what was going on. But subsequently, I meditated upon it and I began, I began to get insights. What was actually happening at these prayer meetings? Apart from the fact that it was built on the model of Genesis 4:26 of screaming, calling out to a God who is out there. There was also an element of James chapter 5, verse 16 to 18 there. "The effective fervent prayer of a righteous man avails much. Elijah was a man with a nature like ours, or a man of like passion", as King James puts it. "and he prayed earnestly that it wouldn't rain, and it did not rain on the land for three years and six months. And he prayed again, and the heaven gave rain, and the earth produced its fruit." For a long time, I used to read this passage and the corresponding passage from 1 Kings chapter 18, where Elijah actually did his praying. And you know that to me, what we were doing on that field together, praying and screaming, was what Elijah did? I felt that we were actually being biblical. My head was telling me that even though I had to, you know, I followed my heart and I didn't go back. But my head was telling me that this is what was going on. It was like we were doing the right thing. And that what we were doing was what Elijah did until I actually took my time to study the Bible. See, sometimes you read the Bible and you get the wrong conclusions. You know about the duel on Mount Carmel? The Bible says that the Lord told Elijah, go and tell Ahab, there will be no rain or dew. Elijah went and passed on that message. And truly, there was no rain or dew for three and a half years. And then after three and a half years, the Lord said, go and show yourself to Ahab and I bring down rain. So he went and challenged Ahab to a duel on Mount Carmel. He said, if God is God, worship him. But if Baal is God, worship him. Enough of the, this vacillating between these two options. So he brought the people there and they brought the prophets of Baal there. Then he said, let there be chosen two boos, one for those prophets and one for me. I will represent the true God. And because there are many of them, let them go first. So they started and those guys slayed, you know, the, the, the slew, sorry, the bull, laid it on the altar and called upon their God to bring fire. We all know how that ended, there was no fire. Elijah mocked them around midday, Elijah started mocking them, said, cry louder. Maybe if, after all, he's a God, maybe he's meditating, maybe he's busy, maybe he's out on a journey, sleeping. He must be awakened, awakened. He was mocking them. And the prophets, when, you know, when they were mocked like that, they got even more agitated. The Bible says they cut themselves... The Bible says they cut themselves with lances and knives until blood gushed out of, out of them. And then. They jumped on the altar. That's got theatrics, drama. They jumped on the altar, said, the, oh, you do. Then. That dead God will wake up, but nothing happened. As evening approached, Elijah summoned the people to draw near. They said, all, all of you come. Then he rebuilt the altar of God, you know, representative altar, which had been torn down because, you know, Ahab had. Um, instituted idol worship. It was not official religion. Then he called upon the people to pour water on the sacrifice. So that the water filled the trench that they had dug around the altar. And when all of that was done, Elijah prayed. Let's read Elijah's prayer. Lord God of Abraham, Isaac and Israel, let it be known this day that you are God. In Israel and I am your servant. In that I have done all these things at your word. Hear me, oh Lord, that these people may know that you are the Lord God and that you have turned their hearts back to you again. The fire of the Lord fell down from heaven and consumed the burnt sacrifice. Which of these two prayers, the prayers of the prophets of Baal and the prayer of Elijah. Reminds you of the prayer meeting that I went to. Elijah said a simple prayer. You know, I used to think that Elijah was going, doing, directing and doing all sorts. Look how sensible his prayer was. You sent me here. Now I'm here before these people. Show them who is God. Because he was talking to an intelligent God. I mean, do you pray like you're talking to an intelligent God? Or do you feel that he's somebody who sits there and, you know, he just receives noises and vibes and whatever? And then when, uh, when he's had enough of all of that, eventually he acts. Simple prayer. And when the people saw it, they fell on their knees saying, the Lord, he is God. The Lord, he is God. Africa is filled with prayer, but much of that prayer is the kind of prayer that the prophets of Baal were praying. Theatrics. Noise. Where had the results? God responds to faith. Not noise or emotions. Don't get me wrong, if you're sad, the Lord feels it. If you're in pain, the Lord feels it. But at the end of the day, what's going to move his power is not your emotions. Some of us think that if we, we look pitiful before God, yeah, look at my situation. Then the more pitiful we are, then the Lord will be, you know, his, you know, he. He, he'll be stirred up and then he'll become more compassionate. No. No, without faith is impossible to please God. Faith is what stirs him. Faith is what makes things work. Elijah stood there not in desperation. In faith, you sent me here. I'm here. You asked me to do this. I have done. Now you do your part. He's a covenant keeping God. So fire came. Fervent prayer in the New Testament. I think we'll end on this note. Fervent prayer in the New Testament. We are supposed to be New Testament believers. Let's see how they did it in the New Testament. In Acts chapter three records the miracle of healing, of the healing of the man crippled from birth. When the people witnessed that miracle. You know, they were blown away. Peter explained, he said, look, why are you guys, why do you guys marvel as though by our own holiness we've healed this man? Let it be known unto you that that Jesus that you guys crucify is by his name that this man has been made whole today. Whilst they were still speaking, Peter and John, the high priest sent soldiers to arrest them. And they asked them, by what power or by what name have you done this? Then Peter failed, but the Holy Spirit said to them, rulers of the people and elders of Israel. If we this day had judged for a good deed done to a helpless man. By what means he has been made well, let it be known to you all. And to all the people of Israel, that by the name of Jesus Christ of Nazareth whom you, 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 you crucified. Whom God raised from the dead, by him, this man stands before you. Of course, the, the Pharisees did not like that. They, they threatened him. Seriously. And then they released them. Now. After the threats were made, well, before the, the threats were made, um. Before they send them off, Peter responded, he said, whether it is right. In the sight of God to listen to you more than to God. You judge, I'm just like that. For we cannot speak, we cannot but speak the things which we have seen and heard. So when they are further threatening them, they let them go, finding no way of punishing them because of the people. Since they all glorified God for what had been done. Now, when the church heard what had happened. The threats coming upon them. They lifted their voices with one accord and prayed. And this is where the fervent prayer comes in. We are talking about the effectual fervent prayer of a righteous man. The Bible says, the effectual fervent prayer of a righteous man avails much, much. So we need to understand what our fervent prayer looks like. Lord, you are God, who made heaven and earth and the sea. And all that is in them, who by the mouth of your servant David have said. Why did the he- nations rage? And the King James, he says, why did the heathen rage? I remember the King James one. And the people plowed vain things. The kings of the earth took their stand and the rulers were gathered together against the Lord and against his Christ. For truly against your holy servant Jesus, whom you appointed, both herald and puncture's pilot. With the Gentiles and the people of Israel would gather together to do whatever your hand and your prom- your purpose determined before to be done. Now, Lord, look on their threats and grant to your servants that with all boldness. They may speak your word by stretching out your hand to hear. And that signs and wonders may be done through the name of your holy servant Jesus. And when they had prayed, the place where they were assembled together was shaken. And they were filled with the Holy Spirit and they spoke the word of God with boldness. You want to understand fair, effective and fervent prayer? How is that in the New Testament? This is it. Doubtless this prayer would not have been said like this. Lord, you are God, who made heaven, certainly not. They were feeling anguish from what had gone on. But not so much that they would engage in senseless, vain repetitions. Which we'll talk about next week. Not so overwhelming emotions, that, oh God, oh God, no, 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 no. They quoted scripture. They quoted scripture. Ask us, do you know which scripture they quoted? They quoted some too. They quoted scripture. In that ferventness, in that anguish, their brains were still intact, sharp. To quote scripture. Because we're dealing with an intelligent God. He created you to fellowship with him, that a fellowship should be a meeting of minds. He gave you a brain, he gave you intellect, he put you far above all creation. Then you should be smarter than all of them because you were made for him to commune with him. That he should share ideas with you and then you should understand and then you should come back to giving feedback. You've turned your communication to loud chanting. That's what the heathen do, but they don't know our God. That's what the heathen do. You are a holy priesthood. And you're supposed to know what your father counts as communion. And begin to engage in, your prayer should change after today. Your prayer life should change. And trust me, when your prayer life changes, a lot will begin to fall into line. A lot of questions that have not been answered will start to be answered. Because you know what, all these years, God has seen, he's been looking for opportunities to commune with you. But you're too busy shouting at him. Notice that these disciples did not pray fire down upon their enemies. Yeah? They did not pray fire down upon their enemies. Elijah used to do that in the Old Testament. Man of God, and then just if I'm a man of God, let fire of God come down upon, Elijah used to do that. And there are people today calling upon fire upon their enemies. When Jesus's disciples tried to do that, look at his gospel. Jesus tried to go through a Samaritan village. When he asked for permission to cross, they said, you, you are heading towards Jerusalem, you are going to go hypocrites. No, you are not passing through here. Most Samaritans and the Jews, they used to. Agree with each other. These two disciples of Jesus were agitated by this. He said, Lord, should we just call down fire upon this village? Like Elijah did, they quoted the Bible. Like Elijah did. Jesus turned that down, he said, you don't even know what spirit you are made of. Do you think the Son of Man came here to destroy lives? And you build those guys. Today people are calling down, and they are doing so in the name of Jesus. Who Jesus are you, uh, uh, praying to? The same Jesus that we build somebody for calling that fire? It's a problem. It's a problem. Prayer is one of the most contaminated areas. In African Christianity. Contaminated with ideas from paganism. It's pagans that call fire upon their enemies. Children of God. They say, Lord, look on their threats and grant unto us, hallelujah. Look on their threats and grant unto us boldness. So that we may go and fight them, no, so that we may do what you told us to do in spite of their threats. You are using yours to bring fire upon people. Now. And by the way, if we've got destroyed, but destroys everybody in fire, how have you benefited? How have you benefited? These ones who have walked out of that situation, bolder than they were when they went into that situation. So that each trouble, they pray for boldness, each trouble, they are now growing. The enemy is not growing, they are growing. Guys, we're going to be running out here. But as you can tell, this is a topic I'm passionate about, as you can feel the passion coming through. Because I feel like this area has, I mean, the bondage here, I just can't begin to tell you. But it's also one area you can begin to score victory like you've never seen before. You will say a prayer and before you finish the prayer, you will see the answer. You will see the answer. Why? Because you would have departed from shouting. The Hebrew word is kala, calling upon the name of, it sounds religious, when actually. You departed from the divine blueprint. Somebody just sent me a message. Okay. Thank you, thank you. So we are going to run out now. And, um. Let's hear if you've got any contributions, if you've got any questions, please bless us. With your contributions and questions. The floor is now open.
Good evening everyone.
Good evening, good evening.
Man of God, God bless you so much.
God bless you too.
God bless you so much for your time, your energy, all you have to go through just to feed us.
Thank God, thank God. Uh, it's a pleasure. It's a pleasure. Yes, I just hope that you're, you're being blessed by it.
Yeah, actually, I'm so happy about the topic. I'm so much blessed, I think. Uh, I can't say it enough, but with a little I've gotten, it's really powerful that. I have an example to, let me see a contribution, something to share about it.
Yeah.
There is a co-tenant, I have a co-tenant who has been praying at dawn very loudly. And as recently she came from church so annoying. She came to me and then she, she got an issue that. Uh, another co-tenant, she heard it somewhere that that co-tenant. It's roaming about with a, a prayer topic. And I was like, what? How did that happen? Like I, I got a time for her to explain everything. And all she told me was this lady is going around with a prayer topic. She had it somewhere that, uh. That's something she said in her prayers when she's been praying at dawn, that means the lady has been listening and then she took. Some of the prayer topic out there. And with what she said, that you made a statement that when we talked to God, as if he was out, he was out there. Uh, somewhere and not inside of us. With that point, I think really much is that brought me to that thing the lady told me. For response to our faith and not to our noise, our emotions and all that, I'm so touched. If this lady has gone inside and meditated quietly. And she has spoken with her God gently, I don't think someone somewhere would have heard it. And if, if you really mind that someone would hear you and take your message out there and you, you would get, you feel so bad. Then why do you make noise then? Then why do you have to make noise? For you to make noise, you shouldn't be bothered if someone is to take your message out there. So I think this is so powerful that I don't know how to take this kind of topic to her. I don't know how she would receive it, but I, I'm just praying and hoping that God will give me a way to. Carry it. I just, I'm so late that day, but I didn't tell her anything because I know the kind of person she, she, she really is. I'm just praying and hoping that one day I will get the courage to, or explain this thing. To, to her. So I'm really touched by the message, yeah.
Amen, 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 thank you. Yes, I think, you know, you pray, pray, God, God gives us wisdom. And he gives us opportunities to reach people. Only he really has the key to people's hearts. And sometimes we, you know, we, we are desperate to reach people, but if you pray for God, pray to God to, to, to give you also that sensitivity. To know when is the right time. Sometimes you might just feel a release in your heart that, oh, this might seem like, might be a good time. If that's the case, you know, you can always forward the message to her and, and, and then, you know, maybe who, who knows, the law might be able to use that to help her. But definitely keep paying your prayers and, um, and the Lord, the Lord will open an, an opportunity for you.
Okay.
Yeah. Good. Okay, so, uh, who wants to go next?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Today, today is very rich. I mean. So much, so much. I've learned so much and I don't even know where to tackle it from. But, eh, eh, it's, you know, it's worrying because we, we, oh, well, let me speak for myself. I've done, I, I, I have done prayer the wrong way so many times. And it's interesting when you said that in the Old Testament, that was when Elijah used to call down fire that. In the New Testament, Jesus rebuked his disciples for doing so. But here we are, I'm not talking about autodos. I've been, I was an autodote before I became a charismatic. Charismatic is so normal to go to church and then to hear that pastor say, maybe suffer not the witch to live. And, yeah, you know, that scripture, the, you, and you feel like you are praying with scripture. Because then they say like, suffer not the witch to, to live. It's in the Bible. So it's not like you are going to kill people illegitimately. The Bible has already said it. And then, you know, scriptures like when, you know, they are like, the Isaiah saw the Lord, those kind of things. So we feel like they are setting people who are there when they sit on your blessing. Like there'll be, there'll be trouble unless they die. And, and we praying and asking God to bring judgment of death upon them. And, and we praying and asking God to bring judgment of death upon them, it's not sinful because it's in the Bible. But then when you look at the New Testament, it's so wrong for us to, it's like calling down fire literally. Onto, onto your, your enemies. But that's not the way God wants to judge sinners. He rather, we pray that, I, I love what you talk, eh, the scripture. It's amazing how we read the Bible and it's like, we, we glance and it's like, we scroll and we don't see the details. Because I would think the disciples or the, the followers would pray that disciples issuing threats, Lord, deal with them. Let them start, get one by one, let them get, scatter them, look, let, let them start falling sick strangely, let some die. That's how I expected the prayer to go, if it was now, that's how the church would tell us to pray. But what did they do? They rather prayed for boldness to face that situation. The boldness to be able, not to be afraid of their threats, not to be afraid of the kind of punishments or persecutions that are coming, but boldness to continue doing it. We have, and I, 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 I'm so glad, my prayers definitely has, has changed from today. Because you, many of the people that we pray that God should deal with were like Paul. So who became Paul later, he was persecuting and killing Christians. Yet he was going to win more souls than many of the, the convert at that time did. So if they had prayed for somebody like Saul to die. We, we the Gentiles may not even have had the benefit of the gospel. So we should be very careful, the kind of things that we pray, no wonder God doesn't even listen to those kind of prayers, because it's noise. Thank you so much, man of God, God bless you with more revelations to, to keep teaching us, thank you so much.
Thank, thank you, thank you, that's very, well summed up, um, anyone else wants to talk?
Yeah, good evening.
Good evening.
Yeah, so I also say God bless you so much, um. We are really learning a lot and. We know our lives will change and like, I really, but you know, it's interesting, you said something. You know, like me from my autodos background, I didn't know how to pray, that kind of prayer, that loud shouting, clapping, pumping. I didn't know, but when I got married, my husband was that type. So it became like, when we are praying.
You learned.
But it didn't sit well with me, like you said. When you were praying separately and someone said you should pray together. You know, it, it, it didn't sit well with me, so, you know, at times, have, have you been looking at him? Then one day I told him that, does he think that? Eh, is the right way to pray, because me, and he said, oh, they're winning, now they all say, when you're in Ghana, eh. You, you are having difficulties and you want to travel, you know, the kind of prayers I was giving. But I think that gradually, yeah, have, because now, I think he has changed his prayer, the way he prays too. Because I mean, I couldn't bear it so much, so he realized this, okay? So I think that now he too, he has turned down with the. Praying, you know, so sometimes it's difficult, because at times I feel like, it feels like I don't like praying. And I'll tell him that when I even sit in the car, I'm driving, I still pray, I can pray that way too. I can pray anytime, okay? So it doesn't mean that we have to be together and then clapping and doing all those things to show that we pray. So God bless you so much, I know that next week will be, you know, we'll have more, so. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, God bless you too. And yeah, it's, it's, it's an interesting, we've all been through, you know, we're Africans, you know, a lot of these things that we do, they are because of our temperament. You know, we come from the southern hemisphere and people from southern hemisphere generally might do, got a more fiery temperament than those from northern hemisphere. But God's power is not dependent on your temperament, you know, you, some of the most. The powerful men who, who had exerted huge influence on, on societies, the like of John Wesley, that some of these guys, they even used to pray in tongues. They even used to pray in tongues, some of them like somebody was chasping that was hearing about that, you know, they, one day he was trying to. Um, pray or something and then some words came out that he didn't understand because he understood, he didn't even do it anymore. And these guys changed nations. You know, so we think that it's in the fireworks, it's in the fireworks that God moves. You know, but actually. The Lord speaks in that still quiet, you know, that's still small voice. And he is pulling you and me into intimate fellowship. Where you can hear his whisper. Because God is not a dramatist, it's the devil that's the dramatist, God is not. And so everything is going to be subtle. Jesus could have come in a jet plane, he could have fired a rocket from there. Hey, look at all the possibilities, look, God picked up Elijah from earth, the chariot of fire. Elijah was given this, uh, one like, what do you call it, you know, this motorcade, you know, presidents and Elijah was given one into heaven. If God wanted to do that, but when he himself was coming down, he was born in the manger. Think, what, what does that say to you about that person? I mean, imagine that you had the power to have chariots of fire, imagine that Jesus had arrived in chariots of fire in Jerusalem, let's see which one I see is going to challenge him. No, they would want to be his assistants. But that would not have been false, that would not have been true conversion, they would have been coming because they're seeing power. Like today, people, true paramount of God. So Jesus came. So that it would take faith. To believe that this guy, this guy, this character's son, this one is the son of God, I don't, I can't, I don't believe it. So that only humble, those who are able to really to humble themselves would believe. That's the way of God. Your ways are not my ways, says the Lord, he is different in the way he thinks and he wants you and him to commune. But how can two work together unless the first of two agree? How can you, he began, begin to commune with him when you think differently? You think, you think in terms of big, big stuff. But as he, the professor major, whereas he is humble. No wonder the two of you are can, you know, C I T I. You can't, you can't work together. But if we calm down. We stop all the noise and all, and you say, Lord, I want to hear you more than I want to talk to you. Because let's face it, you are smarter than me. Let's face it, you have more to say than I do. So you know what, let me hear you first. You are not ready to pray. To the, you know, the, the way God wants you to pray. Until you fill your heart with the word of God, we'll talk about it tomorrow, and I said tomorrow, next week, tomorrow, next week. And we, we, you will see that you are not ready to pray to God the way he wants you to pray. Until you have filled your heart with the word of God. Like the, the believers did. They went and quoted the Psalm. Reminded God of what he had said hundred years, hundreds of years ago. I said, now based on this, that's our request. May less with boldness. Are you ready to pray? Or you're ready to shout? You are ready to truly pray? You actually need to begin with Bible study. So I think we have time for one or at most two contributions before we finish, um. We see, we haven't heard from you and there's also a new, a new name here, I haven't seen before, Evangeli, welcome. Um, I don't know if you want to unmute yourself and just say hello, um, Evangeli? And there's Frank as well, I don't know if the same Frank we had here some time back or a different Frank.
Yeah, it's the same Frank.
Oh, the same Frank, hello Frank, how are you?
Yes, Pastor Bear, I'm good, and you?
I'm good, by God's grace, good by God's grace, yes. Anything to share with us today?
I joined lately.
Oh, you joined lately.
But I knew this. Was going to be one of the best so far. And I think the latter part, I keep, I really, um. Got it right, in fact, you said it all. Hmm, we have gone the wrong way, but not.
Hello? I think we've lost you there.
That's. Setting, I think, and walking in the right direction of how we have done so. In fact, if I, as recall, I can't say it all yet, but we are grateful to God that insight has come. And we believe you abide by the insight and commune with God the right way. God bless you for having yourself for this wonderful meeting, you are so grateful.
God bless you too, God bless you. Okay, and Pierre Quessi, do you want to share something with us with?
Yeah, good evening everyone, and thank you so much for such wonderful, um, teaching. I like the way you approached it and I hope we've all been blessed. The disciples came to Jesus and they said, teach us to pray. I remember when I got born again, we went to church and we were asked to pray. And we started praying. And we prayed according to the way people pray, the louder, the better. You know, if, if, you know, I, my experience is very similar to yours. But then I read Ephesians three twenty and my mind just went, you know. So if God can answer according to what I ask or think. Then he must be very close. So I struggled a bit, I mean, because you, 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 you reason with supposedly elderly believers, you went to meet in the faith. And they don't have answers to your questions. So I, I came across a man of God who held me out, he said, he asked a question. Which of these, um, acts expresses love genuinely? You are at a dinner, candlelight dinner with your wife and you express love to the person, I love you, you only whisper, you don't shout. And then you could be at the airport, your wife is about to go through immigration and you scream out, I love you. There are two different scenarios, so he asked the audience, which of them expresses your sincere love? And they realized that it depends on the situation. There are times that you need to whisper, there are times that you may have to shout. But from where we're coming from. The louder, the better. So we, we, and unfortunately, our culture doesn't allow us to question people ahead of us. So we imbibe everything, we embrace everything and we struggle in our Christian work. So I, I just want to compliment you for the exhaustive, I mean, it's exhaustive, work you've done. And I trust that as we go through it, all of us, all of us will embrace change. Because look, if, if you are really sincere. You will look over your prayer and find out whether they've been answered or not. Because God doesn't answer every prayer, I like it when my sister says that. It's not every prayer that God answers, but why do we pray them? It's because we haven't even sat down to question why we do what we do. So let's continue to learn, let's continue to listen and I trust God that we will all come to the place where we'll be effective in prayer, thank you for a good work done.
Amen, thank you, thank you, guys, we're pretty powerful, thank you. Okay, people, thank you, um, it's been a, a good one, um, a long one. And I think we'll finish here and we'll meet again by God's grace next week, we're continuing this topic of prayer. Please invite friends, anybody that you think would benefit, look, remember the worst thing that they'll say is. No, that's the worst they can say, but you know, if you write them, send them the link and then you pray for them, who knows, the Lord might use you, the Lord might use that invitation. Um, and so please invite people, um, if you want, you know, you, you, if you know someone that you care about, you think this is really, and I don't know any African that this thing doesn't affect. So if you know someone that you think that will benefit, you know, just share the link with them, the worst that they can say is, no, thank you. So have a lovely week, have a lovely weekend and I'll see you again next week, God bless you.